The New Britain Board of Education. Providing students with a high-quality education. This time is now 6:03 and we're going to call this meeting to order. Ms. Chaney, if you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Kanata, if you would please call the roll.
Ms. Chaney?
Here.
Mr. Pitt?
Here.
Mr. Mersch here?
Here.
Ms. Mooney's?
Here.
Ms. Parker?
Here.
Ms. Sanders Connolly?
Here.
Ms. Sims?
Here.
Here. If we could please take a moment of meditation. Thank you. We have staff and student recognition. I see you back there, Ms. Leon O'Clough, and if you could please come up, please.
Thank you, I'm thrilled to be here today.
Thank you for having me this evening and for us to take some time to recognize the students and teachers whose artwork went to Atsugi, Japan. Just to give some brief history to people who might not know, Atsugi, Japan is one of the five sister cities of New Britain. This sister city relationship was established on May 31st, 1983. Atsugi is mainly known as a bedroom community for the Tokyo-Yokohama metropolitan area. Every year around November, December, the Atsugi Board of Education requests artwork from our students in New Britain to be sent from us to them for their art show in Japan. Each year I extend the invitation to all of the art teachers in the district based on Atsugi's specifications. The specifications include children ages 6 to 15, pictures and designs using any materials with about 10 pieces, sent to them in January for a display in February. The student pieces were selected and matted by their teachers and then shipped out to ensure delivery by the due date. Atsugi Superintendent/Intern sends a lovely thank you letter and a token of appreciation to each child. Tonight we will recognize those teachers and students whose artwork was on display in Atsugi, Japan as part of our sister-city relationship. And I also have a lovely letter to Mrs. Sarah and pictures from the installation in Japan that I'd like to share with you. Want to just pass that now? If there are any students, if they could come forward now. Ariadna, are you here? Ariadna? Are you Ariadna?
Nope.
Ariadna?
Diaz.
Diaz. Is she here? Not here, okay. Dia Jones. Hold your artwork. Jaglin Benan Batances. Very nice. Turn this way too. Good job. Tanisha Acevedo Rosario. Aliya Soto. Isabella Costa. Aliana Martel. Lisa Naples. Tatiana Chapman. And we have our last one is Destiny Lopez. Yes, and we have the teachers. Sure, I won't call their names right now. I don't want to forget them because without them we wouldn't have this opportunity. Ms. Grimilian from Jefferson. Mrs. Stavola and Marie Stavola from Gaffney. Joel Corvo, do you want to stay? Mr. Stavola. Ms. Kelly Wilson from Vans. Tyler Morey from North End. Ashley Lotovico from Holmes. Liz Emerson from Smalley's. Linda Tonyolo from Smith. Kristen Ramsey from De Laurentiis. And Ursula Bragwitz from Howells and Rupp.
I put it in alphabetical order. Okay, so what we are going to do is board members are going to stand. We're going to do this just like a choir, seeing none, everybody seeing none?
No.
Ready, one, two, three.
Okay, they're going to stand right here. They're going to come around, shake your hand so you don't have to do it.
And they get to see your artwork.
And they get to see the artwork. It's hard to see it over there, so you have to come over.
How about you guys move out a little bit and it's like a gallery. And they get to look at your artwork.
Maybe the teachers can hold their certificates so they can hold their artwork up and you can take their hand.
Absolutely, so.
I certainly can. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you, Frank. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
But so do their mothers. They want them. Looks nice. I'm going to lay out some of the other artwork for you to see.
Why you go circles and squares?
All right, still remember.
Always nice to see you.
Here is your gift from Japan.
It's for you.
Black and white senders for you. All the way from Japan makes a special. Congratulations.
Amazing, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
And we'll give you two minutes to. Thank you. Eat your vegetables.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, that's pretty.
Now, what is this?
It's pretty, it's polished. Okay. We are now on to the public participation portion. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board? Anyone here who would like to address the board? And for the final time, anyone here who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. A couple of things you have in your packet. Last, I think it was last Thursday evening or Wednesday, Mr. Kane and I and Mr. Selena was there. We went to present to the Common Council over at City Hall. And it was more of a dialogue than a presentation. But it was to bring to the Common Council our presentation that we had done with the Finance Board about a month earlier. And at the Finance Board, there's very few people there. And, you know, in terms of transparency, I think the last two years we've worked really hard. And I know in years past too, but I can only speak from my tenure, at showing a budget that's real and transparent. Mr. Kane has done a really good job over the years of creating line items that we can actually understand. I know in years past it was very confusing. So he's worked really hard over the last five years to do that. And I think over the last two years we have shown good faith. And again, it's always making sure we are good with every dollar we have. So there was a few things that we weren't able to bring up. Part of it was, I think it went on for two hours. And it was great, good discussion, a lot of questions back and forth, that was good. Thank you to the board members that came. Let's see, Anna, you were there. Nancy, you were there. Violet, you were there for a bit. Merrill was there. Nicole. We had a really nice showing from the board. So that was, that was just, it was nice. And the fact that you stood up in the beginning and spoke on just the importance of recognizing Howard Department as a very integral part of the city's success, right? That's really what it's about. So anyway, you were there for the presentation, but we didn't really talk about a couple of things that I wanted to bring up and just shine a light on. And if you're interested, if you weren't there and you want a copy of the presentation, Matt Kanata can share with you just so you can see what we presented. But of importance, I think, now if you could bring up the first slide. What we are trying to show here, I'll bring it up a little more. Mr. Brokaw, can you turn off the lights? Because I think it'd be easier for people to see. And again, this is only a two-year look back really. And we could have gone several years further. We're showing by department, and we know that we are a special department in the city. You know, we're a little bit different. We are considered one of their departments. But as a Board of Education, you're given a budget and you use the budget based on our recommendations in the best interest of all kids. There's not a lot of city oversight on how we spend the allocated dollars. But what we wanted to show was where we ranked in terms of our ask and what we've received over the last few years. So in the first column is the ranking. The second column is the department, all of the departments in the city, and the percentage that they received in terms of their ask. So in 1415, the number one was the IT Department. They got a 25% increase over the prior fiscal year. Economic Development got a 13.8% increase from prior fiscal year. And you can go all the way down and you can see that we were ranked 11th with the Police Department right above us who got a half percent. We were flat funded that year. So, and there was four other departments that were below us that actually were, they saw a loss in their dollars. Then we go to 1516. And I'm just trying to show for you. In this year, they were ranked 12th. So Tax Collector's Office had to hand back some money, about 5%. But if you go up to the next school year, you see that the tax collectors, they got 14.3 differential or percentage increase from the prior year. So when they had to take a hit here, they were given money in the next year. Register, let's see, Republican Registars were given 1909. Community Services were given 10.74. Democratic Register was given 25.5 percentage increase from the prior year's budget. And if you look here, we came in dead last that year at 0%. So our message basically is, recognize the Assembly Department. Recognize, and one thing I would keep apologizing for is that we are the largest budget by far in this city. And we are a city that doesn't have a lot of money. And so I want to keep stressing that, I understand the importance of it. But when we've done a really good job over these last two years of going in with an ask that really reflects contractual obligation, minimally, we should be recognized for contractual obligation, minimally. And if we were to go back beyond 1415 and 10 years, 12 years prior, you'll see that we were flat funded repeatedly. And so each year, cost of living, contractual obligations, that's our reality. It's everyone's reality who has a business. And so you've got to budget for that, you've got to find that. And because our denominator is so large, that percentage of ask is always significantly more in terms of dollars that they spend. In 1617, we did get two percentage difference. It wasn't enough to cover our contractual, but it was something. And so what we're just trying to show them is, we are a department in our city. We are probably one of the most departments, and I'm not being biased. But we know that educating 10,000 students is what's going to spur economic development in the town. It's going to make us a more solvent community. They're just, we all know what education does to a city. So we just wanted to show that we aren't coming in asking for 1315%. That's not what we're asking for. Last year, I think the Board of Ed, we asked for 0.8, under 1% ask for contractual obligations because we were able to recognize savings, specifically in transportation, and a couple of other areas that we didn't even have to go in. We said, "Look, we don't even need the full contractual amount, we have this." And we were flat funded for that less than 1%. When that was an easier one, when you look at our denominator, okay, we can give at least the 1%. So this year, we went and we asked initially for 3.72%, I believe, was our original ask back in January. And since then, we've been able to recognize 1.6 million? 1.6 million in transportation savings as a result of going out to bid and contracting with a new vendor. So we've now reduced our ask down to 2.72?
2.41.
So close, 2.41. So now we're going back and saying, "Okay, we don't really need the 3.72 because we recognized the savings, now we're asking for the 2.41" in terms of contractual obligation. We're not asking for any more. We're not asking to hire additional staff. We're saying, "Let us maintain what we have." And recognize us as a department in the city that has this very same contractual obligations as every other department, which are all critically important. But we have to be, and again, money talks and it does shine a light on what we value. So anyway, I just wanted to point that slide out. And then the other, Mr. Kane, if you wouldn't mind talking a little bit about it. There's some misconceptions sometimes in our community. And I just want to be sure that if we have questions about it, this is something we can talk about regarding money that is bonded for capital improvement.
Just bring back the other slide where Ms. Sarah was talking about, the second slide, Matt. This is really what we're talking right now with $1.6 million. And you see the footnote below, it says revised as of March 22nd. That's when we costed our transportation. We actually, we got the new bid results in and we actually sat down, our transportation manager sat down. He costed out what the numbers would be next year for the budget. We reduced it on March 26th by $1.6 million. So the original request to the city was just under $4.7 million or 3.72%. Now the request is $3 million, slightly over $3 million at 2.41%. Now, when we talk about bonding projects, you know, I've heard since I've been here, I'm not sure where I've read it or I've heard it, where this, I think there's a misconception on school projects and how they're bonded or financed. I mean, I've heard that at times statements have been made where, you know, there's $90 million, $100 million of school projects were bonding. Really, school projects for New Britain, they're reimbursed at 79%, 79.27% of eligible costs. Sometimes not all costs eligible. So if you're looking at this thing right here, this is the city official statement for 2018. This is the most recent statement that comes out. And it shows the date of all the existing projects that still haven't been closed from the city's books. So you're looking back in New Britain High School. There's a project in New Britain High School for $16.6 million. The unauthorized part is really the portion that you haven't bonded for and also the portion you haven't received any grants back on. And sometimes these projects haven't been closed out yet because many times the audit hasn't been completed. It really should be completed by this point in time, you know, 10, 12 years after the fact. But this project is still outstanding. So you'll see on the right-hand side, it talked about $383,000. That hasn't been bonded or an unissued debt. More than likely, this project doesn't have any life left to it and it probably won't be financed. So that's number one. So when you look at these things on official statements, sometimes you look at it and say, "Geez, we're going to still bond this?" No, we're not. If you go down to the Gaffney School Project, if you recall, the Gaffney School Project is pretty much done. There may be some little pieces left of it. But the Gaffney School Project was $30 million. If you look at the city's site in the accounting section, you'll see that they spent $28, $29 million, I've seen it. At the same time, you see grants coming in. That's not accounted for in here. Because all you're seeing right here, you're seeing the bonded portion of $6.3 million, which is probably about 21% of the authorization or the appropriation. My guess, that's probably what's going to be bonded. That number there doesn't include the grants coming back in. And also, many times when projects happen, a school construction project, there used to be a 5% holdback. So when I was in Sinnesbury, we did a high school renovation project which was probably about $50 million. The state held back the 5% money that was owed to the town of Sinnesbury. The state does the same thing to the city in New Britain, they hold back. I believe that 5% may be wrong, it could be 10% today. So what you're seeing there is, you're seeing numbers out there that it probably won't be financed. So all you're looking down right now is, you look at the Smalley Project. And we all know the Smalley Project is $53 million, of which 79% of it is probably going to be reimbursed. Now, if you turn to the next slide, Matt. Now, I don't really know what the assumption of the Smalley Project is. But, you know, school capital projects that are fully bonded or financed by the city. City only bonds its share of the project. The state share is 79.2% of eligible costs. So when you think about it, what is the city's share of the Smalley Project? I don't know exactly what it is. I don't know what's ineligible. But I can tell you, if the whole project is fully reimbursable, the grants are going to pick up $42 million to that project. And the differential is $10 million. Let's say 10.1 is the city's share. Now, sometimes you look at a capital project, it's 1% or 2% ineligible. I actually increased this quite a bit. I said, "What if 5% of this project is not eligible to be reimbursed?" It's just basically, it's the city cost towards the project. And it's really telling me that 95% of that project is going to be fully reimbursed and 5% is going to be ineligible for whatever reason. If you do the math here, it's $39 million or $40 million is going to be state grants. And when the city bonds this project, it's not going to be $53 million, it's going to be upwards of $13 million. So when people talk about publicly that, you know, the Smalley Project is $55 million we're bonding, no, it's an appropriation out there that says, or $53 million is appropriation that says you can spend $53 million. But when you look at the legal language for appropriation, it'll tell you, you can finance up to $53 million net of reimbursements. So when you get grants back in, you're not going to finance. Your bond council, your legal advisors will not allow you to finance something that you're getting money back. So that's one of the misconceptions out there, you'll see that. So basically upwards of 79% of our projects are fully reimbursed. There is some ineligible cost probably. So really, 75% of the project plus is being funded by the state of Connecticut. The other 20 to 25% is probably going to be financed or bonded.
And I think this came up, Mr. Kane. We were somewhere, and I remember hearing someone say, "We spent $50 million or $45 million on Gaffney."
Yep, they did say that.
And I said, "The city didn't spend $45 million." 80% of that was reimbursed by the state. And I'm just saying in layman's terms because you're eloquent with your finance words. But, so the bottom line is, if you're doing a project at $40 million, and as long as we stick to what the guidelines are for what we can be reimbursed for, which I know Mr. Selena and Mr. Moore are always in the Building Committee, that is what they do, they make sure that it's reimbursable. So if it's a $40 million project and we're being reimbursed at 80%, $32 million of that is not a burden to the city. That's what it really comes down to. And so we just wanted to clear up that misconception because oftentimes what we hear is, "Well, we may be flat funding you, but we're paying $40 million for a new school." And then the issue becomes too, but who owns the buildings, right? And again, where I say we're a special department, it's almost like the Board of Education manages that $125 million within the school. And that's not a part of your responsibility to make the capital improvements or, you know, the city owns the buildings, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, in many municipalities, which you're going to see, New Britain's a little different because, you know, it's a different form of government. But in some of the smaller towns, when they bring a capital project forward to the voters, they bring a project forward to the voters for like a school project with $50 million or $100 million. Same time, what we bring forward to the voter is what the cost is to you. If the cost to the citizens is 30% of that project, when I was in Sinnesbury, the cost was 30%. We didn't get reimbursed at 80%, we got reimbursed at 30%. But when we brought that project to the citizens, we basically told the citizens that 70% of that project is going to be on you. So when we had a $50 million project, we knew $35 million of that project is going to be bonded. And we also knew what it would be to the taxpayer, just the average taxpayer. So we actually ran the numbers, we also knew what was coming up. So when we publicly went out there, we talked about $50 million. But we also knew that the taxpayer is only going to pay 70% of it. And that's sometimes, it's a misnomer because people don't realize that when we spend $50 million for a school project, it's not costing the citizens in New Britain $50 million.
$10 million.
Yeah, it's a much smaller, it's a much smaller portion. And that's sometimes, it's kind of lost. And you can see that when you, actually when you look at any official statement for any community including New Britain, you'll see what the bonded portion of the project is. You'll see what's been bonded for capital improvements. You'll see what's bonded in schools, you'll see what's bonded in stores. Then when you see the unissued debt below, they still capture that. But sometimes in other schedules, I used to capture what was really, what was really your portion. So, you know, it's not going to be financed.
And then I was just going to also bring up, and I think that it's probably something good, Mr. Kane, to talk about, the 13.5 that we spend per pupil.
Yes.
So if I take $13,500, which puts us almost at the bottom, 167, I probably thought it was.
160, yeah, there's 100, right now, we only knew, right at this point in time, there's only 164 out of 166 towns or school districts have provided the numbers. Usually it's 169, so we're probably at 167.
So if I said to you, "Break down that 13.5 for me, break it down." Who pays what portion of that 13? Who pays what portion of that $13,500 per each student?
I didn't bring that slide. But really, if you think about that 13.5, ECS really spends on...
Educational cost sharing.
Yeah, and that's, geez, we had the numbers up there, Matt.
I want to say...
I don't...
I think that it was about $8,000.
Yeah, somewhere about...
Our budget is $1.25.
Yeah, it's about, okay, 70, I think about 7,500, yeah, 7,572 is ECS funded. So the seven, the seven poor districts in the state of Connecticut, and New Britain is one of the seven poor districts. We are number five in receiving ECS funding per student. So our ECS funding per student is approximately $7,572. We spend $13,381. So the differential is $5,809. And that $5,809 is not all picked up by the city in New Britain. Some of that is Title I, IDA.
Other grant dollars.
Somewhere about, you know, 4,000 or somewhere around $4,000, $4,500 is picked up by the city. So when you think about ECS funding, it's picked up about $7,500, $7,600. The city portion through taxation is probably about $4,500. And the differential is through the other grants we receive.
And so I think we wanted to point that out too because, again, as a taxpayer in the city, and I know we all are too, you know, it's always, our dollars are going to education already. But when we think about it, and again, part of this was this ping pong game of us going to the legislative office building and talking to our reps and saying, we need more money. And them saying to us, you're already fifth paid, top paid in the state. There's only four other districts above you that get money. You know, you're already getting a lot from us. So when we come back and we look, we're like, well, yeah, that $13,500, we're getting about $7,600 from the state already. That's a significant change. So what's left on the city is this $5,800. But we have other grant dollars that come in and offset that. So really, what the taxpayer in New Britain is paying for each student is $4,500. And I'm not giving exact figures, I'm estimating. He never estimates, I estimate. So really, when you think about it, it's about one-third of what we're paying per pupil expenditure is what our city contributes. And I understand, again, we have to put things in context. We are not a rich city. But I just want the taxpayer to know that every time we raise taxes, it doesn't mean it's going into our education pocket.
Okay, the slide in front of you right now, unfortunately, I don't have my other glasses on, so it's hard to see.
I can help you there.
This is the Dur Guy. Dur Guy is the poorest school district, it's the last one.
So Hartford's number one.
New Britain is...
We are seventh.
We're seventh.
For per pupil expenditure. Out of seven, we're seventh.
Yeah, we're seventh in our district. So you see there, our per pupil expenditure is $13,381. If you go to the column in the middle, it talks about ECS funding.
Yep.
Our ECS funding per student is $7,572. So out of the seven districts, we are number five in receiving money from the state of Connecticut.
Only Waterbury and Lulunder are below us.
If you look over to the far right, it's just really doing a math. It's taking the $13,381, subtracting the $7,572, and it's saying the differential, which is being paid through the city or the municipality you're in, less other funding sources. And less other funding sources would be Title I, be IDA. There's several others out there.
So, and again, it's just to, I think oftentimes the taxpayers, and I'm a taxpayer, and I probably didn't know this until I took this job, right? And it's just, it's informing our city residents on what actually is going toward education in our taxes and what we're currently paying.
So when you look at that, really, any per pupil expenditure, the only community that is, number six is Bridgeport. Bridgeport is spending about $14,200, it looks like. Only Bridgeport is actually receiving a little less from the city and other funding than us. They're receiving $56,09. But if you look at the other communities out there, like the Hartford's of the world...
Hartford exceeds us.
They're all receiving, you know, somewhere between $8,000 to $10,000.
Yeah, Hartford's 97.52 and New Haven is 10,072.
So if you look at the, if you're somebody who's receiving $8,000, we're receiving $5,800, that's $22,000 difference. I mean, if we think we have 10,000 students plus, that's $22 million plus. If you're receiving $10,000 and you're receiving $4,200 difference, that's about $42 million. So if we just did our math and said, geez, if we received the same type of funding these other communities received, that's $42 million or $22 million. I can live with the 22.
I could look at, I could live with non-flat funding, right? And that just shows you, but, I mean, we have to, and again, it's not like we don't have work to do at the state level as well, because we do. Because we're fifth out of seven, but it's better than what the city is allocating per pupil. The state is at least, but we have work to do at the state level as well, to get them to fund New Britain and fix the formula. So, and again, I mean, I liken it to, I feel like we're the victims and I'm just running and begging people, okay, look at the picture, this is what it is. And they point fingers and they say, you go to the state, you go to the city, you do. And all we're saying is, if our students are the most important thing in New Britain, and if we really believe that education is the ticket, then we have to fund as a city accordingly. So that was my superintendent report for the night. I do have one other thing, and just for your consideration. Did you want to, were there questions on that?
So you talked about bonding. The thing that got left off of the conversation with the city council was the current need for bonding for school roofs. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, this is the last slide.
Last slide.
Yes, this slide is really, this is information taken off of Mr. Moore's presentation, I think, like several months ago. I just summarized it a little differently. There are six roof projects we're looking at, and you see the square footers there. So for instance, you have Plasky, $66,000 square feet, for NaMo, $20,000 for metal. It's giving you a non-eligible cost, and it's only a small piece of all those projects are ineligible, and it's giving the eligible cost. So what you're seeing down below is just giving you a calculation, it's taking whatever is eligible, hitting it by 79.27%. And it's really saying that the state's share, just for the Plasky roof, would be $1.7 million and the city's share would be 575. So it's just doing all the math all the way across. And if we did all six of those projects, the city's share would be 3.3 to 3.4 million. And you have to remember too, you have to fully expend it too. So more than likely, if the appropriation is accurate, you're probably not going to spend the full amount, you'd probably be slightly under that. So the city amount would be probably a little lower, and of course, the state amount would be a little lower too. Because I know when Mr. Moore does an estimate, he does provide some contingency in his estimates, so he wants to make sure he doesn't err in the wrong direction, causing more problems in the end.
So, I mean, when we say it's 13.3 to do all these roofs here, what we're really saying is the state is going to chip in close to 10.
Yes.
And what the city will own is 3.3 or 3.4 million. In a nutshell. Did you guys have questions on any of that?
And this is full roofing, right? This is not like patchwork or anything.
This is, Mr. Moore, is it full roofs, new roofs?
Yes, Plasky, Jefferson, Chamberlain, Roosevelt, Slade Homes are all 100% re-roofing.
And those, as I recall, are 25 and 30-year-old roofs?
All of those roofs are greater than 20 years and that's the deadline to be fully eligible for reimbursement, but they range in a 25 to 30-year range.
So as soon as it hits 20 years, we're eligible for the reimbursement?
Full reimbursement, yes.
And some of those are leaking?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
That's why they're out of repairs.
Right, and then we have buckling the floors, tiles, loads.
They're all in need now of re-roofing.
Well, it's not, it's not, it's data, right? And good, bad, or ugly, it is what it is.
It is our story. Yes, that is regular maintenance, I just mean that. What's all encompassing, it is our story, right? And it is part of the reason why I think a lot of people do not, do not know the whole story. When you say raise taxes, and people say, oh, we want to raise taxes. But when you look at the percentage of our taxes, it actually goes to education versus other places. That's big. And that's not the tell. People don't know that. It does.
I have two other small things. I promise I will be brief on this. I want to be really brief on this one, so you all say, yes, of course, this sounds great. So you're all aware that a transformation is occurring in New Britain and that we're looking at repurposing some existing positions and doing staff movement and all of those things. So I am proposing to give our teachers who will be moved, and there will be several, time to pack up and have room rearrangements because there will be multiple room rearrangements as we reconfigure the high school, the middle schools. We want this all done really before the start of the next school year. I'd like to propose a calendar change to have two early dismissal days at the end of the school year in addition to the last day of school, which is already scheduled. So if you look on the superintendent report I have, I'm going to go to all other schools first and then I'll move up to Smalley, Chamberlain, and Lincoln. So all other schools, the last day of school is June 18th. I'm proposing that we have early dismissals so that teachers can pack, get themselves settled, put some closure on one before they move to the next position or the next place to look at June 14, 15, and the 18th as half-day for students.
Thursday, Friday, Monday, is that?
Yeah, that's correct. Thursday, Friday, Monday. Smalley's last day of school is June 20th. And their early dismissal then would be on June 18, 19, and 20.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Correct. And for Chamberlain and Lincoln, who had extended days, we know, early dismissal for them will be on the 15th, 18th, and then the 19th.
Friday, Monday, Tuesday.
Right. Or if you want to do it all really easily, go to all of it, the 14, 15, and 18, and those other schools who have extra days, just make them full days. That way, all elementary would be out on, and that would be my best proposal. All schools will have half-days on June 14, June 15, and June 18. In order to pack.
So this is the other option, not together? So this, this, or this?
Yeah, yeah. I would prefer, you know, the last one, which is all schools basically having early release on 14, 15, and 18.
And you would have full days on...
On those days where Chamberlain, Lincoln, and Smalley have to make up. So it would be after the 18th, if you understand what I mean.
Correct.
Gotcha.
And again...
Bus buses, it's supposed to have the money the same day.
Yes, I would say so. I think it would be best if all of the elementary and middles had half-days. That way, it'd be one bus schedule, you know, 14, 15, and...
Less confusion.
That would be the best confusion. And again, this isn't something that's, and as we go further into the meeting tonight, you'll see we have the calendar that we're proposing for next year, which does away with half-days for students next year. So it's not like we're being frivolous here, and I don't mean it to be, but if we want this next year to start well, we want to be able to give our teachers the time that they need during their workday to get the work done. And then the only other thing, last one, I promise. And Mr. Prokop, he can speak on it for two minutes, just to let you know that our registration online is up and information is on the website. So our registration for schools. Do you want to talk about it for one minute?
Yeah, so new registration opened up a few weeks ago and currently, at this stage, we have, as new registrations, over 110 kindergartners have already done it.
That's awesome.
Additional 33 preschools. And then that doesn't include the returning, which was a separate form out there, which another 50 PKs have moved up to kindergarten at that point and 32 have gone through to return. So basically, the process is already started and what happens, they go through, they do their initial registration, and then at the end of it, they book their appointment to go into central registration and finalize it where they bring it back.
It's working. So that's a good one. Yeah, which is nice. But it's also parent-friendly. It just, and, and it saves on, it controls the crowds that come in through central registration, which is nice. We can moderate or control.
People aren't coming when we're closed.
Right, right. I think that's it.
Well, I have a question on that. We were going to have a, like a kiosk. Are we going to still have that?
Yeah, we set up some there and we can expand. We're working right now, I think, with some of FRC to help with that parental support and acclimate them for those that need that additional assistance at first. So we don't have kiosks set up everywhere at this point, but certainly still want to do that.
And then remember, we discussed that we were going to have something with the language. Was it the language we were in?
No, we just said we would, you know, I requested to look at it before it went live and was told that I would, but I don't know who else was interested as well, but...
I can show it to you, obviously. What it was, was an exact mirroring of what our application is. So we definitely vetted with that in mind. There was a tight timeline to get things up and running in terms of deal rate of lottery and the return, so, but I can, if you'd like me to set up time, or I can send you the link.
I mean, I can flip through, yeah. If it's up, it's live online.
So that way, you don't have to start a registration. There's a preview that I could send you the link.
Yeah, that'll be great. If you can set this all up, yeah. Thanks.
Is it publicized? How do parents know?
Right from the district website. In fact, we found at first, there was a little too many choices for them to have to decide through. So we made a real simple Google form, asking them, are you registering a new student? You know, to kind of guide them with yes or no questions to, here's the link to...
Because we will post it in the library, in the children's department, where there are families and children who are not in school, but I need one poster.
We need flyers, yeah. That's part of our rollout right now. Start getting that together.
We can, the museum, we can, we'll hand it out, story, I mean, you know, we can, we can help certainly publicize a place where families gather, so...
We're putting those together, so when they come out, we'll get those to the schools as well.
And obviously, the best way to get somebody to fill out an electronic form is to get to them when they're on their computer.
Right.
And it's, you know, so a direct link to it that people can share with friends who've got, it's a registering for kindergarten.
Social media push already as well?
Yeah.
Will you tag us, we'll tag friends?
Yeah.
Committee reports. Personnel committee?
Personnel, they see a couple items, M and N on the consent agenda are for new positions that were discussed at some length. The personnel essentially come down to it as these positions are necessary in order to fill various obligations, legal obligations, and to be compliant. So we do recommend that they be passed. Hold it off if you have specific questions.
Finance committee?
You will see a lot... Actually, it's mostly renewal, license renewals, replacing some trucks that are just basically falling apart on us. One that we'll probably pull off is the math classroom. But that is it.
Policy?
Policy is currently reviewing our school, school policies regarding code of conduct and behavior. We noted in our discussion that administrative regs aren't necessarily updated with all the work we've been doing around well-managed classroom, interior intervention. So that was sent back to the administration to sort of review, get some feedback on what our current practices are. And we'll be looking at our next policy meeting to update our policy to be more in line with our vision and our current practices. That's it.
Okay, excellent. And curriculum, I know Brizdo is no longer with us. Does anybody from curriculum who'd like to?
Curriculum did not need this month.
All right, so I am looking to go...
Wellness committee is going to meet on the 1st of May at 8 o'clock at a location to be determined.
Where's the, that one? It's also, I can't remember now, but, yes. Okay. Board reports. Anyone have a board report? Activities they've attended or what?
Baseball season's starting?
Yes, the first game was cancelled today because of the-
First game was cancelled today, but, you know. I was going to say that.
Family.
Oh, that was, amazing.
It was awesome.
Students did a great job at-
Yeah, it was awesome.
Awesome.
Uncle Fester was my favorite.
My favorite.
Yep.
He run the next-
He could probably come, well, I would love to have him in the audience just to do something. He had cholester.
Could use one of those every once in a while.
Wednesday did an amazing job. She did an amazing job.
Oh, she did, she was a big fan.
I was so convinced with her.
Mm-hmm. They were great.
Love it. Always great from the arts department. All right. So you know all the board reports? Please take a minute to review the consent agenda for any items that were not addressed, and if you'd like to take any off, please let me know.
H. J.
H.
J. N, as in Nancy, or Nicole? Or Nick, sorry?
Nancy, Nicole, or Nick, yes, N. It was implied.
It was.
Any others? Okay. So, and a short consent would be A, B, C, D, E, F, G, I, K, L, M, O, N, P. I know, it's like, should I stop saying the alphabet? And the rest of the alphabet, please. All right. So, H. Operations approved bid waiver and purchase order for mathematics classroom furniture order at New Britain High School. Take a motion to discuss this?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion?
I'm curious, it was the approved commissioner's grant, but then the funding was commissioner's network grant, sick budget unsure? So I wasn't, I'm not sure what-
You're unsure what they're referring to?
Was that a math thing? Is it a math thing that it's?
I'll answer it.
Yeah, okay.
Gail West, my department, gets involved in the purchasing of all of the furniture. Sandra Sanford has $50,000 to upgrade furniture and five math classrooms at the high school, and these five math classrooms are all specialized furniture to address deficiencies that we have in certain programs in math.
Yeah.
So the $50,000 will go into these five classrooms at the high school to improve teaching and learning in the math department at high school.
So maybe she meant to say a million would come from the sick budget?
The school improves, sick is school improvement grant.
Right, so maybe a million, 50,000 from, 50, no, so 50,000-
Fifty-one thousand is coming from-
Would be commissioners.
Excess would have to come from somewhere else.
It's all commissioners. It's, I'm going to say it's all commissioners.
The umbrella of commissioners' network.
Is that what we're trying to?
I would imagine.
Yeah.
It's all commissioners' network, we have to expend those dollars.
In the background and purpose, it seems to state that there was $50,000 budgeted as part of our commissioners' network, and then it states that the excess of $1,027.26 fits into the property line, property line item. So is that property line item within the commissioners' network, or is that local funding for that additional thousand?
Yeah, the furniture comes to 51,000 and change.
Right.
We're allowed to over-expend a line item by 10%.
Ah.
The additional 1,000 and change that were over the 50,000 will come out of the commissioners' network grant. I'd say property.
Thank you.
So, so the clarity is just that, on page 33, where it says financial information, the last word says unsure, that was where it became confusing.
It's coming out of that, that line item.
Yeah, okay.
Got it.
Motion to strike the word unsure from financial information to just make this clear.
Because we are sure.
Because we're sure. Second.
Oh, second, second.
Second, all right.
But I do have a question, too. I under, this is great that we're getting this for the students. I understand it's going to a math class. Is there any way that we keep inventory on this, on this?
Yes.
All on this furniture, because it's a lot?
Because it's grant-funded, it will be labeled in inventory, because it's got to be used for the purpose that we receive the grant money for.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just as a point of order, we have the motion to strike-
All those in favor of striking the unsure word out of the financial information line, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the bid waiver and purchase order, the amended version, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Excellent. All right, so that was H. And now have I. Academics approve purchase order for the NWEA and math.
That's J.
J.
J, sorry. I am sorry, J. I wrote through it, that's why I can't read it. I know my alphabet, I promise. Motion?
Were we talking, were we talking about J?
Yeah, we were talking about J. But we need a motion to discuss it.
Motion?
Second.
Excellent, discussion.
I have questions about how this assessment is used and our, how much teacher input goes into deciding to use this assessment. So I'm going to, I'll take this first. We're given, this is for K through three, really, primarily, and we're given a list from the state of recommend, or approved assessments that we can use. Years past, we used the DRA. It's not on the approved list any longer for the state of Connecticut as one of the tools. NWEA, we started five years ago or six years ago? I think it was six years ago. And we have to do a standard test measure for the state, because our district is considered an opportunity district. We have to submit scores three times a year, a standard measure that the state approves for our kindergarten through grade-three students. I think all of us agree that having kindergarteners sit on a computer and do a test is developmentally inappropriate.
Absolutely.
Would back that 1 million percent. But the others are, one another, ones that is approved is a DIBELS, which doesn't really give the gamut of, especially when you get up to grades three, DIBELS is not as appropriate for a grade-three student. We are bound by state to hand in these scores. As far as teachers having input, no, I'm not going to say they've had input over the last couple of years, because they haven't. We know that we have to do something, and we talk this every single year, but it's known, and everyone's shaking their head, it's known, it's a known test now, it's something that our teachers, although they don't love it, and we know that we have to hand in scores, and it doesn't give us valuable information as far as moving instruction, knowing all of that, we still have to hand the state something. So it's the devil we know. In between, we are using DRA or diagnostics like the DIBELS to drive instruction and benchmark assessments, but that's why we have, we have to hand something to the state in terms of progress, and that is how they track our progress K-3. So we did it at middle school up until last year, and we said it's not giving us, it's not really giving us information. We know that. So that's what I have.
So, and there's nothing else out there, or are you just-
Well, there's DIBELS, but then we would have to retrain people, and the difference between DIBELS and NWEA is that DIBELS is one-on-one. It's one-on-one with the child. NWEA cuts back on the amount of testing that has to be done. The state requires only for us to use it for language, I mean, for reading. We don't have to do the math and the language, it's the reading that they want the scores on. It takes less time to do NWEA administration than it does a DIBELS. DIBELS will have to retrain on. So everything has a cost associated with it, and, and I think that while DIBELS I find to be a good test, not everyone will agree. We were at the state last week and asking our state, our state consultant for ELA, what's the best test and what do you think people, and STAR came up, I believe that's the one they, was it STAR?
Meredith uses STAR.
I use STAR. But that, we definitely don't test kindergarteners.
Right. We don't have a, we don't have a choice there. And we can't, I suppose we could say DIBELS for kindergarten and then grades one, two, and three, but now you're, now you're having to teach two different things. I think everyone can agree that NWEA is not, it's not the best tool to use. So yes, DIBELS is another option, STAR is another one, but STAR is similar to NWEA in terms of it's an online test, they have to sit at a computer, and we don't have the luxury of not testing our kinders, we have to do that.
Nancy, since when? When did this start?
Years and years ago.
Really?
Ten years.
Yeah. I can say to you minimally, 10 years ago. When you're an opportunity district, you have to hand in your scores three times a year. And John can speak to that more, too, our R and D guy is in the back. John, do you want to come up and maybe talk a little?
The state requires that we submit the scores for reading. It's also used for summer school invites.
Yes.
We're required to use the same assessment that we're using for K-3 three times a year for the invitations to summer school. So that's another requirement for this. And, and I've looked at STAR, there's another one, I-ready. They all, you know, some of them have things that are a little bit better, a little bit worse, but I think the main thing is how much training it would take to really get another assessment into the classrooms and have teachers comfortable with it, and is it really going to give us something more, you know? Is it worth it? As well as the money, you know, it's, some of these tests, I think DIBELS would be the one that would be less money.
But it's one-on-one?
Exactly.
So then you factor in the amount of time you're taking away from teaching to do that, when teachers still use the DRA as a diagnostic as they go along.
It doesn't have to be administered by teachers. We use Fontis and Pennell, for example, and we'll have different people in the building who actually pull the kids to, to not take the time away from the teachers.
From the teachers.
I mean, there are creative ways to do it. I just have a really hard time with this specific test, and especially with testing kids that early in these kind of tests, but-
So you use, you use a different test that's administered one-on-one?
But not for kindergarteners, anyway. We use Fontis and Pennell, but for upper, yeah. When, in a different district I was in, they were actually doing NWEA for kindergarteners, the teachers bound together, went to the superintendent and said, absolutely not, we're not doing this, we don't care if the state says so, and they had the courage to say, you know what, we're not doing it. And they didn't. And the superintendent took that money that, you know, you get for Title I funding and you do all other, can do many other things with, and actually gave it back to the teachers. They had to write a proposal and gave it back to them as a grant using research-based strategies for a new, like, learning-through-play program for all the kindergarteners. And so, you know, we knew, we know that when we take the time to use research-based teaching strategies to, to teach kids early on, we're going to reap the results later, later on, and we have to trust that process and trust that teaching process. So, you know, just kind of pulling from some of those experiences that I've had, I really just have a hard time with that, but thank you.
Right, and whether we like it or not, there has to be assessment in the kindergarten level that we have to hand to the state. That parts our reality. Whether it's NWEA or not NWEA, it has to be something that we have, that's valid, reliable, and standard, and we have to go off the approved list.
So can we say that we, maybe we can look into doing something, like trying to find a way to do-
Sure. I think that we, we, it can be something different at the kindergarten level. I think that before you do that, you poll the grades one through three teachers, too, to say, because there are going to be teachers who say the convenience of NWEA now, in addition to their doing regular diagnostic, outweighs, you know, the first grader sitting at a computer. And that's something that we can definitely poll the teachers to find out, but whether, whatever it is, we are trying to be consistent K-3.
Yeah.
Well, so you can compare from year to year, that's the other thing.
But maybe that would be one of those things that people, retired people, not me, might be willing to come in to test a kindergarten, you know what I mean?
Right, right, to do that one-on-one, yes.
Not me, I got to be a retired old woman.
I mean, I remember the big pitch with NWEA is that it's really individualized, and so students aren't sort of pitted against each other. It's that student, where they're at, how much they've grown, teacher makes a new goal and things like that. I know for my own child in second grade, she came home bawling one day, and I'm like, what's going on? Super high achiever kid, what happened? Dropped two points on the math NWEA. So now, in second grade, she was at a, I think, fifth grade level according to that, instead of the sixth grade level that she tested at, you know, prior, prior months, which is ridiculous, because you're obviously an extremely high-achieving child, but having that, you know, it, it looks negative, it highlights it negatively, and you have to set artificial goals even for children that are way above benchmark, and it, it really, you know, there are a lot of issues with it.
Agree.
I think we can all agree.
At every level, but testing in general, yeah, are just many negative issues around testing to students. We all, we all believe that.
So the state of Connecticut did a reading pilot with Haskins Reading Lab, and I think they used DIBELS as opposed to DRA or-
It's more phonics-based.
Yeah, and, you know, I've seen some of the reports from that, and it sounded like some of the school districts in Waterbury had made big improvements in reading, and just sort of, I would be curious to find out, now that it's a couple more years of data, where are they, and is that something that we should look at instead of what we're doing?
DIBELS versus NWEA. I, I think that that is something that our Department of Academics is, every year, we bring this up of what is the right assessment? Not too much, don't want to overburden teachers, don't, you know, all of those things come up, but we can absolutely look at DIBELS. I am a proponent of DIBELS, other than it's a very narrow focus on, there's not a whole lot with comprehension.
Right.
Which, that's why it doesn't serve well by the third grade, but-
But I think it's definitely a continued conversation, and the curriculum committee definitely, I think, can take that charge to continue to look at it and see where, what gains and what challenges there are and to see what we can do. I think that's where we have our voice, and where we can kind of make the decision in those discussions. Did you have anything, Mr. Merzey?
I was just going to say, I've, I've worked in districts that have used all three. The district I'm currently in was using NWEA, now uses STAR. Some teachers really prefer one over the other, other teachers, they really don't. Yeah, they're, they're going to use whatever they're told to use. I've worked in a district where DIBELS was what they used, and the biggest challenge there was actually getting consistent, reliable data points, because what they found-
Different people divvling.
Depending on how it's implemented, that's one of the issues that you have, is some of the consistency and standardization to get accurate data. But the other question I have is with regards to disposition on the matter before us, which is this purchase order, where we have the option to either approve, deny, we could table and see what it would be if we were looking to reduce the amount of seats that we're having, because the proposal we have before us, if I'm reading correctly, is the number of seats anticipated for K-1 and 2?
It's, K-5 is, is the total. This is substantially less than previous years. We were doing K-8, and at one point, K-10. So it has gone down, the, the actual price for license has not gone up in the last few years.
So that's sort of my question to the board members, is with regard to this, are we, are we looking to postpone and have this discussion now, or are we looking for change in the upcoming school year, or are we looking to explore this? Because this is an annual renewal, correct?
Correct. And I do want to say, and I'm not 100%, but I'm pretty sure that the state requires us to use the same test, K-3, that we cannot use one assessment at kindergarten and another one at third. I'll check into that, but I'm, I'm pretty sure, I remember reading that, because we were looking at it at one point.
Right, that's what I mean, so you'd have to, like, phase it out as they move out, then you can go less and less on your, your license, right?
Well, no, we would have to switch to-
It's, K five is, is the total. This is substantially less than two years. We were doing K eight and at one point, K ten. So it has gone down. The, the actual price for license has not gone up in the last few years.
So that's sort of my question to the board members is with regard to this. Are we, are we looking to postpone and have this discussion now? Or are we looking for change in the coming school year? Or are we looking to explore this? Because this is an annual renewal, correct?
Correct. And I do want to say, and I'm not a hundred percent, but I'm pretty sure that the state requires us to use the same test, K three, that we cannot use one assessment at kindergarten and another one at...
You'd have to phase it out.
I'll check into that, but I'm, I'm pretty sure, I remember reading that because we were looking at it at one point.
Right, that's what you mean, so you'd have to like phase it out as they move out and you can go less and less on your, your license, right?
Well, no, we would have to switch to...
So K three would have to switch and then five through eight could, or four through, yeah, four through, four and five would have the same rate?
Correct, four and five here.
Okay.
Just so we could have that information, I'd motion to postpone this until our second meeting in April to have that information so we have a better understanding and that gives board members time to, you know, discuss or think on it.
Okay. All those in favor of motion, well, motion to postpone, of postponing this item until the second meeting?
He made the motion, right?
Yes.
Second, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of postponing to the second meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Okay, I guess you have a question. If you postpone, are you at a risk of losing any kind of contractual, like, savings?
I do not believe so. I don't, I do not believe so. I, I will check on that as well and see if there's any, I do not know of any firm date where that price would change.
Thank you.
And just also a side note, for those of you who have other questions or have burning questions, if we could send them to myself and Matt so that we can get them to, to the academic folks so we can kind of sort out some more details before that meeting, that would be great. Fair enough.
Uh-huh.
All right. All right, and, and?
Grant talk about this.
Sure. Personnel, approve the job description for cumulative student records. I can never say it ever.
That's okay.
Cumulative student records clerk. And Ms. Grant, if you would please?
Speak to the cumulative records clerk.
So this position is really supporting the need to respond to requests that are coming in. As our students leave, there is a, a very small window of time when we receive a request from another school district that we have to send them out a copy of the child's records. And one of those things is, is the medical file. And so we have unfortunately had our nursing supervisor downstairs for weeks making sure that, that files were sent out and we were just very backed up and really did not have anybody to, to respond to this task. We get records requests all of the time. However, many of the buildings are able to handle them, but when a student leaves, the medical records come here. And so this is primarily for getting those medical records because children can't be in these schools until those records are received.
Is there a, like, a number of, of, like, occurrences? Like, is there, how many, how often this happens?
We have hundreds of children that come in and out on a regular basis.
Okay.
And so I think it's 10 days they want the records. And so again, we're, we're receiving the records. Sometimes you're also getting requests from courts, from law offices, and we have to hold on to these for years. And we don't have anybody that is available to become down here, I think the records are down on this floor, and be able to, to take those and make the copies and get those out.
So I will say that...
I will just, here in the personnel committee, we had Jackie Maddie, our nursing supervisor there who presented, and I can't remember the exact number, but she said there was several hundred records. We are still behind and we're trying to catch up. And I know recently we've had subpoenas delivered to us, one of our schools because we were still not behind in transferring the records.
I just want to say I've worked at the high school in the registration office and I've worked with these transcripts in medicals and I remember it was thinking, how come they don't have somebody for this, you know? And it's, it is a lot. It is a lot. And, you know, when the secretaries are trying to multitask as they do, and then this is a, this is a beast in its own self, so it, it is a lot.
Okay.
They also said that the person would be here part-time and then at the high school as well. So they would share, that 40 hours would be shared amongst all global records plus the high school record.
There's a huge responsibility with HIPAA too.
Yeah, I was just going to say it's pretty...
And confidentiality of these, and so that is another consideration. You, you can't use students who can't use other people for that purpose.
We also even talked about the fact that they didn't want them to kind of be just manning the phones either because then you have less time to do that. Yes, they would answer the phone, but not just be, they couldn't do, double and be the person, like the switchboard operator and also do that.
Right, and do that.
It wouldn't work, it wouldn't be successful.
Their main focus is the transcripts and medicals and getting that out correctly.
Any other questions, discussion?
No, I'm good.
Motion to approve the job description?
Excellent.
All those in favor of approving the job description, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Excellent. Okay. Continue business. The first one is a personnel to approve the recommendation for administrative appointment. Ms. Sarah, if you would address this one, please.
I certainly would. I'd like to recommend the approval of the following appointment. Ms. Andrea Feligno, who is currently the interim assistant, I was going to say assistant superintendent, assistant... The interim assistant principal at Smalley Elementary School to the position of Smalley Elementary School Assistant Principal effective April third. I will just say, Ms. Feligno, I remember not even a year ago, her calling me the night before school began to say, I don't think I can do this, I'm not sure I like... And took it and within a month said, this is the best job ever. So she's met with challenges. She walked into a new building, 500, 600 new students, commands a presence there, certainly is a teacher at heart and will go in and facilitate learning for our teachers at every level, showing them instead of telling, which is, has been really nice, and is all-in. And she's done an amazing job in this short period of time and I think that she's committed to staying as an assistant principal, not going back to being a teacher. So anyway, I'd like to recommend her wholeheartedly. Excellent. Motion.
I was going to say, second, okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Excellent. Congratulations, Ms. Sarah. Who's standing?
Let's get those things, one of the... I feel like I've been sitting all day.
I know, I'm like six... She said, oh, she's coming. Hi. She's coming behind the veil. I like room back there.
Fast, faster.
You're third grader, so, listen, I've got a third grader taller than me and I was like, listen, I will still, I think you will still listen to what I have to say about that.
Right.
I'm like losing my mind, I'm sorry. All right. Next on the list, partnerships to, we're looking to approve the Nurses Aid Training Program Agreement between CSD and B and Hospital for Special Care and... Motion's in for...
Second.
And the presentation by Sandra Roach?
Yeah. Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Sandy Roach. I've been a teacher with the high school now since 1999. And just a little background on the CNA program, you are so fortunate, we've had this program, it's the oldest CNA program in the state of Connecticut in a public school. So thank you for all your support. So what we're asking for is, it's been quite a long time since our contract has been approved and probably three superintendents before is the signature on this current one, Hospital for Special Care. So we want to get it updated. And I think you guys all have copies of it.
We do, we do.
So it really hasn't changed much, a little bit of the wording. And I would entertain any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
Hi, Annie.
Hi, how are you doing? So this is for your students to go to Hospital for Special Care?
Correct. Currently, we go to four different programs. The students get three opportunities. They all go to Hospital for Special Care for 20 hours of clinical, at 24, 26, but we, they have to do 20. Then they go to New Brit, the hospital, Central Connecticut, Old New Britain General. And then they go to a nursing home. They, we use Monsignor Bojanowski and currently Grandview, which is Old Walnut Hill. So we give them three opportunities. And if I, when I go to meetings with other schools, they go to one place and it's a nursing home. So I think our kids are very fortunate that they get the opportunity to see an acute care setting plus the extended care facility. And these guys are going to be taken care of us, so I really make sure they do a good job. Some statistics, so 50 years is coming up next year. That's a long time. Mrs. Povano did 23 years as, I don't know if you remember Cynthia Povano, she was the instrument that got it going. And then Joan Geraci did seven years, remember Jo?
Jo.
Joan, yeah. She did seven years and then I've been there since 99. So it's, it's a nice, strong, long program. We've sent 1,587 students through the program.
Wow.
And I have all their names, maiden names if they got married and, but I have names and I put the statistics together, I have a spreadsheet if anyone's interested. I see parents and I see students, so they, the moms and dads have taken the class and then the kids have come through, which is a fun thing. Currently, one of our instructors is a student, was a student at Monsignor Bojanowski, so he's in LPN now who went through the program. So that's kind of fun when I see that. It's, it's, I love my job 99% of the time. You know, there's always that 1% that it's like, hey, am I doing this? But anyways, any questions?
Thank you so much. Do you have something?
Actually, I just have a quick question for Mr. Kane, actually. Do we current, it calls out in 2Q, it talks about the insurance that we need to carry, which is $2 million in combined single, general liability, professional liability insurance of $2 million, and so for a total of $4,000. Do we currently have those insurance?
Yes, we do.
Four million, I mean.
With Mercer. Mercer is the company that we use. We do, we renew it every February.
Perfect, thank you.
And it probably costs, it's like, I think it's $18 a student that the board kicks in. So we're current with that.
Perfect.
Our immunizations, the students get their TB testing yearly, they have to have their vaccinations for school, so we're covered there. The students have to pay for uniforms, which is not a big deal because they get to wear them once a week because it's part of the grade. And then they have to pay for the state test that they take in May, which is an expense that they personally pay, it's $118 a kid. When I started, it was $40 and it's gone up to $118, but they pay that once and they never have to pay it again as long as they work one shift in a two-year period. So it's lifetime. And many students will do this, not many, but some will do this and this will be what they do for life. Most of them use it as a stepping stone and then they, you know, work part-time while they're in college. So it's, it's a great program. So thanks for supporting us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right. Operations calendar.
Motion to approve the 2018, 2019 school calendar.
Second.
As the president and report, okay.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Salina?
Yes, one of the things that is noticeable here as Mr. Sarah has spoken about is the removal of half-days for PD for training for our staff that is going to be incorporated into the schools. We are starting the 27th of August again, still before Labor Day, which as we see this year with the snow days, the snow days that we had, we originally were going to get out June 6th, we're getting on June 18th. So had we been getting out the 15th or 16th, we would have been moving 20. So hopefully next year, snow is not as much of a factor. And this gets us out on June 12th.
And we did put back in three half-days for parent-teacher conferences twice a year. That was the teachers that requested that additional day passed, two wasn't enough they needed for.
I have a question about parent-teacher conferences at the elementary school. When it's half-day, actually at any, even at the middle school when they do the half-days, is it always half-day, the second half?
Yes. What do you mean morning, like, instead of having...
Like teachers teach in the morning and then the kids...
Yeah, that's always the way it's done.
Half-day, right? Has, has it been considered or ever even discussed doing an inverted, like a delay? And that way, I know that was something that, that, that I have experienced before that was really helpful for parents who, for example, work their shift but could have an appointment with me at 7:00 AM as soon as they got out of work. And, and, and it just addresses more of those families, you know, the timing is very, you know, middle-class typical work schedule. When you do it that way?
Sure.
And this just kind of opens up for more, I know we're always talking about parental involvement in the district, so just something to think about. I don't, you know, I, I know it's already, or whatever, it's proposed like that, but I don't, you know, depending on your teacher input or whatever else.
I'd say we have never, I, in my, my time, I'm not sure that we ever considered that. Or maybe people who...
Or people who go to work at nine, so they're perfectly fine with going in at 8:00 AM and then leaving their child right after.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly look into that further. The only concern would be that, you know, now families that have to look at keeping their children home until 11 o'clock or 12 o'clock, I'm not sure if that's a burden on, on a greater portion of the families that we may, you know, get, get to come out early.
We do a survey.
Yeah, I was just saying, we do a survey, get the parents to...
I mean, it's sort of equal to get two-hour delays if we have snow and they, sending them home early is often quite a burden actually for many families.
Yes.
Based on people's jobs, so just, you know.
So are you proposing, I'm sorry?
Just another question along that line. Do we currently allow within the building, student administrators allow for flexibility for teachers? Because I know it depends district to district, but I know somewhere, really, they have the half-day schedules, but some teachers will schedule with parents to meet before school or earlier in the day. And as long as all the conferences get done, the teachers often work with the individual families to address some of those concerns.
So that, that happens all the time. That definitely happens. I mean, a lot of our teachers are doing...
They're accommodating.
I've known some that are very strict about it sometimes. You will stay in the building until...
Or even families who maybe can't make it in physically, phone conferences are a way too, and it's not ideal, but it's good for the family too. But, I mean, I think that that's something that maybe we can, I, I say poll the parents really over, and maybe Matt, that's something that we can put out online to say, you know, just to have them take that quick thing and see how many people respond to that. And I mean, even if we, we approve the calendar, we were saying a half-day, so it doesn't matter if it's a half-day afternoon or a half-day morning. Yeah, no, that's a good idea though.
I have, I do have a question, just because it's April, there are some teachers out in the audience. February vacation has gone away, why? Because of the crack schools, because of...
Everything.
Everything, like, is it just, we want to get out of school, middle of June? I just, I mean, this time of year, and I'm, I'm sure for you guys too, I'm hearing parents, teachers, students like losing their marbles at this time of the year. Like, if they would have that little break, maybe an extra day, I don't, I just don't...
We do have two days, but still alone again, yeah.
I know.
The real world is not two days.
So, so, okay. I don't have to do it off, but let's, let's, let's circle back. So Ms. Chaney, your response is, real world, we don't have, people just don't get to...
Let's hear the answer.
I want to ask a question.
Right, so what was your comment?
I, I was going to say that originally there were changes at the state legislature which restricted what calendars we could follow, where we had to align our calendars to the regional, the regional calendars. However, one change that recently passed through the legislature was a relief from that burden, opening up the option for having more variance among district calendars. Opening up the option for having more variance among district calendars. That was originally a state legislative change.
Mr. Salina?
Right, and, you know, to that end, you know, there's always that thought to, you know, if we had a break in February, we can then get the people away from each other, and that helps... But then, on the other hand, I think since January, when we came back, we have probably had three weeks that were uninterrupted as full weeks because of the number of snow days. So that's been, we, I have that upstairs. So, you know, then when you have so many interruptions in late June, January into February into early March, and then through all vacation in there, too. That was, I think, one of the reasons that it's been eliminated for the last several years.
And there are two days, I mean, we do give the 11th and the 12th next year, I mean, we have two days in a row.
Oh, there are not two days in a row, remember?
But they are now next year.
Oh, they are, they are again.
And you know what?
Didn't we manage that, were we bargaining for that someplace?
No, now we don't have to follow everyone's calendar, so this is... Right, and you know what, now that you say that, I do say, it used to be just that, Monday and Monday.
And then we have Friday and Monday.
All right, I retract my question because they have two days in February.
Can't retract your question? Do you feel better about your question?
It's the color coding, I have to get used to the color coding.
Did you have another comment, Mr. Mercer?
No, I haven't finished counting, I'm sorry.
Making sure there's 183 days?
No. No, I typically also look at Mondays versus Wednes, how many Mondays do we have? Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Fridays, because I know for many of our specialists in music, art, PE, and other areas like that, who see students on the same days, you know.
So it's been, as we look at scheduling efficiencies this year and looking to revise what we're currently doing, we're looking to go A, B, C, D, E days. So students won't lose, so if it's a snow day on A, they come back the next day, it's A. And so they'll get everything, and so that'll be K8. We're looking to go A, B, C, D, E.
To all the panicking teachers. It's a panic first, it's a...
Well, we discussed that, we know, and it's gonna be even, you know, just going to pay to our families that just because there's a snow day, nope, they still have PE, or they have this special, or that kind of thing. And they won't lose their time.
All those in favor of the school calendar for 2018-2019, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Next on the agenda is a personnel discussion regarding a confidential personnel matter. We're gonna be going into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session with, to include the board, Ms. Sarah and Dr. Tucker.
We are in executive session. Oh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? We are back in from executive session. Got two things. The first one...
Motion to add an item to the agenda regarding the 2017-2018 school calendar.
Second.
Okay, so, we got a motion. It's in a second. All those in favor of adding the item for the 2017-2018 school year, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Okay. Discussion, Ms. Sarah, you could...
Yes, and so I'm just going to say that what we would propose is that beginning on June 14, which is a Thursday, all the way to the end of the year have half-days. So that will include, for the majority of our buildings, the 14th, the 15th, and the 18th. But for those schools who had to go, have to extend their year because of days off during the year, continue to give the half-days. And so from the 14th until the end of everyone's last day of school, make them half-days.
Any questions?
Wait one minute, can you say the last part of it?
Yep, so, that's okay. So we're proposing that beginning on June 14, going forward to everyone's last day of school, to be half-days.
So the 14th is the Thursday?
It's a Thursday.
So the Thursday and Friday of that week, the Monday of the following week, which is the majority of the school district's last day, and then the two...
Smalley, which goes to the 20th. We're gonna say, we're gonna just propose at that point, make the 19th and the 20th for Smalley, half-days as well.
Because they had to make it up for closure for elite, for...
For them, just for ease.
For their makeup days.
So people don't feel like they've gone half-days and now I've got to go back.
Go back for four days again.
Which no one will show up for.
So then, motion to amend the 2017-2018 school calendar so that all days from June 14 through the end of the calendar year shall be half-days for all schools in the Consolidated School District of New Britain.
Motion, second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Excellent, so you can pass that on.
I will send out the email.
Okay, and you're writing out a motion? Moment to write out the motion. Okay, there we go.
I motion to authorize Nicholas Mercer to represent the Consolidated School District of New Britain in the evidentiary hearing in the matter of DECO versus the New Britain Board of Education.
Friendly amendment, that should have said, and that was my mistake, represent the Board of Education of New Britain. New Britain Board of Education, not the Consolidated School District of New Britain.
The Board of Education, right.
So, motion to authorize Nicholas Mercer to represent the New Britain Board of Education in the evidentiary hearing in the matter of DECO versus New Britain Board of Education.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Too bad, too bad. A motion to adjourn.
Oh, here, now, just...
Seeing no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.